Hello, good evening. I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, December 4th meeting of the Town Council of Corder Madera. We'll go to roll call.
Councilmember Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Here.
Mayor Rivasio?
Here.
Okay, if you may join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. At least, please, I'm going to kneel, I promise. Okay, we now move to open time for public comment. This is if you wanted to speak about items that are not on the agenda, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at open time? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the consent calendar. There are no presentations. The purpose of the consent calendar is the group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously do not require further discussion. It can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the council staff or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Yes, sir, Mr. Cusamano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I would like to pull item 4.1.6, the B-PAC committee item. We're going to move that to the next meeting, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
And just a quick clarification for the consent calendar for item 4.1.5. We're asking you to authorize the Public Works Director to approve. I would like to change that wording to clarify, we're asking you to delegate the authority to the Public Works Director, as we don't have an agreement in place to approve yet. So, just a point of clarification.
So, amending 4.1.5 and removing 4.1.6. Anybody else? If not, then I will entertain a motion to approve items 4.1 through 4.8 excluding 4.1.6.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes. Okay, there are no sanitary district items. We move on to a public hearing to consider the introduction of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5956 by amending or adding section 16.1.0, .060, et cetera. And we have a report from town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Peter Brown of Pelagorex Department. Just a few introductory remarks, and I might have Jared come up to the mic and talk a little more. One of the things that the community of Corder Madera prides ourselves on is our preparedness in terms of flood. And we do this through community policy, we do this through this particular ordinance, and we do it through a lot of our pump station and capital improvement work. We are regularly in contact with the Department of Water Resources. They often do audits. They come and they look at how we're reviewing permits, how we are authorizing members of the community to, say, raise their homes or to flood-proof their homes. And we also, as you all know, are members of a community rating system which enables us to get discounts for homeowners because the town goes above and beyond the minimum requirements to ensure that we're as protected as we can be, given the fact that a third of our homes are in the floodplain. In our most recent discussions with the Department of Water Resources, they had some recommendations for us, and I think that they're good ones, and so we wanted to bring to you those changes to the ordinance. They're redlined, and so hopefully they're easy to follow. And Jared, do you want to talk a little bit about any of those items? Oh, there you are. You're on the other side. You're in Todd's seat. That's crazy.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, so, we had a good meeting visit with the Water Resources Board, and as part of the Community Assistance Visit a couple months ago, and they brought up a few updates that they would recommend us to include in our flood prevention ordinance. So, we've made those updates. I can go into detail, or, you know, let you choose and ask any questions on it. One item that we included that was not requested from that was actually requested internally, and that's 1610.080, item A3A. You'll see it in red there. It's on page 14. Basically, we added clarification to residential construction needed to be elevated above the base flood elevation for any building that has residential use associated with it. So, this was in a gray area before. It was either residential or non-residential. It was a little bit of a gray area between those two. So, now we've amended this particular language to add any residential use, such as a hotel that could have residential use, or a multi-use building with some residential use. That particular portion needs to be raised.
On the ground floor.
On the ground floor, yeah, above the base flood elevation plus one. So, that was the only addition that we added internally that wasn't requested per that Community Assistance Visit. Otherwise, it was clarifications to our existing ordinance. And, yeah, so, any questions? I'd be happy to help out.
The new coastal high hazard areas. Do we have any of those in town, and where are they?
It's a good question. So, over the bay water, within town limits, we do have areas of that coastal high hazard area. Nothing that falls on land. So, if there's any piers or docks extending beyond the shoreline, could be subject there. And I specifically requested clarification from the person that requested that, and he said, well, in the future, if any amendments are done to the map, you already have it in your town limits. So, if it goes on land, you'll have it in your ordinance. That's part of that.
Any other questions from council? Yes?
Just one, who's our floodplain administrator? Is that you, Peter?
That is me.
Nice work.
Thank you. I have a lot of titles here. I can't keep track of them all myself, so thank you for the reminder. I also don't do as much work in the administration of the floodplain and the permit review as Jared does and as some of the other engineers, so I have written a memo that delegates their authority to do that. So, we're covered, and we're keeping up to speed with the requirements. Thank you, and by the way, thank you very much for doing this.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one question. Which parts of Corder Madera would be deemed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, or the Department of Water Resources that flood management infrastructure designed to protect the land is not adequate to avoid risks of flooding? Is that basically from here to the bay?
Yeah. I think that's just language that captures our most vulnerable areas. I think that if we didn't have the infrastructure in that we have in terms of the storage basins and the lagoons and the pump stations, we probably wouldn't meet that requirement, but we do. But it is, yeah, it's about a third of the town.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay, hearing none, we will then open it up to the public for any questions or comments. None, okay, hearing none, then we will come back to the council for any comments, discussion, or a possible motion to introduce the ordinance, amending ordinance number 95.
I'm ready to make a motion if nobody has a comment.
Second.
The motion would be to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, amending section 16.10.060b, .070d and e, .080a and c, and 16.10.100 of chapter 16.10 entitled Flood Damage Prevention of the Municipal Code.
Okay, second stance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes. Okay, moving forward then to business items. Our first business item, 6.1.1, Presentation and Discussion of the Development of a Town Ordinance Regulating Cannabis-Related Businesses and Cultivation of Cannabis for Personal Use. And we have a report from Phil Boyle on this. Phil?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Phil Boyle, Senior Planner with the town here, and members of the public. Yes, the item before you today is a discussion and informational item regarding the town of Corder Madera potential cannabis ordinance and writing a cannabis ordinance for the town. I did want to first just mention late correspondence that we received. Is that your places? That correspondence is one item from Marin County, another item from the Coalition Connection, a letter, and then also several handouts and items from Peter Chase, who's the Chair of our Planning Commission. So, how we're going to structure our presentation this evening, myself and also Sean Kennings, who's, I'd like to introduce to you. Sean Kennings is helping us out as a planning consultant, working on this project as well, and he's helped out through the entirety of the project. So, I'll be giving the first half of the PowerPoint, and then Sean will give the second half, and then I'll give a brief summary of the staff report and the survey results. So, diving in. Again, the agenda for tonight, a welcome, background, state and federal issues and regulations. We'll talk about local issues. We'll talk about the public survey. We'll have public comment, questions and answers, and then we'll talk about next steps. So, the goal of this workshop and all of our workshops were to provide information, to share resources, to gather opinions, and we gathered opinions from residents, from business owners, and from industry representatives. Throughout the whole process, we have had a cannabis ordinance webpage on the town's website, giving people information, staff reports, minutes, all the public workshop materials, all the public workshop videos. We've had links to state and county regulations and a plethora of information for people to digest. Process we've gone through back in September, we had two public workshops. One was on a Wednesday evening here, and the other one was on a Saturday afternoon, also here at Town Hall. We had a public survey that was out on the website from September to the end of October, and then we had a Planning Commission back in October 23rd, where we had a very similar presentation we gave to the Planning Commission. And here we are before the Town Council, and our goal is to, our goal is to create an ordinance prior to September of 2019, because at that point, the moratorium and the prohibition will run out of time. So, we should have no problem adopting a new ordinance by that time. Just a little bit of background on cannabis, cannabis 101. I won't go into details of these definitions, but basically, when one talks about cannabis, we're talking about the entire plant. When one talks about marijuana or other various words for that is the flowers or the stems and the items that one consumes to get the effect of the plant. THC is the psychoactive ingredient that gives one, again, affects one when they consume marijuana. Marijuana, many ways to consume it, as I'm sure many of you know, smoking, inhaling, there is infusions and edibles of different types that one can consume as well. I'll just preface it, neither Sean nor I claim to be experts on cannabis or marijuana, but we've done a lot of research, and hopefully, if you have any questions that we can't answer this evening, we'll go and do our research and get back to you. There is medicinal cannabis sometimes, and that is, again, refers to the cannabis plant and the extracts. It's used for a number of different illnesses, different conditions, anxiety, loss of appetite, and a variety of different things. Cannabis, however, is not, medicinal cannabis, however, is not considered a legal drug by the federal government. It's still an illegal substance in federal law and from the Federal Controlled Substance Act of 1970. History of major cannabis laws in California, back in 1996, we had Proposition 215, which was the Compassionate Use Act, which legalized medicinal cannabis if one had a physician's recommendation. 2003, there was Senate Bill 240, another municipal marijuana program act that gave additional protection to cardholders and cooperatives distributing and providing medicinal cannabis. We're using the term non-medicinal cannabis, often called adult cannabis or recreational, but I think more common term nowadays is non-medicinal. So, that's the term we'll be using throughout this presentation. In terms of state law regarding non-medicinal, back in 2015, we had the MCRSA, which was made up of three separate bills. It established regulations, standards, testing, and licensing for, should I say, not, actually, medicinal cannabis. Sorry, that one should have been under, in the first heading. So, that was medicinal cannabis as well. And then in 2016, we had Proposition 64. That was the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, which legalized recreational or non-medicinal cannabis for adults 21 and over. And then back just in 2017, we had SB 94, which kind of linked medicinal and non-medicinal, or it was titled Adult Use Cannabis, together and more streamlined and combined the two types of cannabis for easier regulations and easier controls. With SB 94, the state created three bureaus. The Bureau of Cannabis Control, the California Department of Food and Agriculture, which already existed, but they, you know, they took on a certain aspect of cannabis control, and then the California Department of Public Health. So, of these three, each of these three entities were given certain jurisdictions and certain control over cannabis, and those are listed below each of those agencies. Even with all the state rules and regulations, they still allowed some local control, and that's why we're here, because there still is local control. Towns have the authority to set certain limits on personal cultivation, both indoor and outdoor. Towns have the authority to prohibit, restrict medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis businesses. Again, which we have done, we've prohibited those businesses until we write our ordinance. Local governments can impose taxation, and they can determine the type of licenses. So, currently, in Corder Madera, in, again, like I said, in response to Prop 64, we established our urgency ordinance that prohibited businesses, and that ordinance will expire, like I said, in September 2019. Prior to the expiration of that ordinance, we will write our own with all its. What's currently allowed in Corder Madera and in other localities are, one can consume cannabis if one is 21 years of age or older, unless for medicinal purposes. One can, again, if one is 21 years or older, one can possess 2.5 grams or about an ounce of non-concentrated cannabis, or eight grams of concentrated cannabis products, and of course, one can possess various accessories for the consumption of it. In terms of cultivation, you're allowed to cultivate six plants for personal use. You can cultivate an additional 12 immature plants if you have a medicinal card. And this cultivation must be within the private residence or on private property. Currently, delivery is allowed into Corder Madera from other jurisdictions. That's one thing we didn't address in our moratorium. What is prohibited in Corder Madera are a number of things, and most of these are prohibited by the state as well. Consuming cannabis in a public place, consuming it in a vehicle or driving under the influence, smoking or vaping cannabis anywhere where tobacco is prohibited, providing cannabis to minors, and however, employees may maintain a drug-free workplace, much like an employee can prohibit tobacco smoking, even though, obviously, it's legal to smoke tobacco, it's legal to consume cannabis, but an employee can, employer can choose to have a drug-free workplace. And smoking of cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school or daycare center is also prohibited. Commercial uses that are prohibited, of course, are due to our moratorium, is businesses, except deliveries. And then possession that is prohibited is possession over the legal limits, and then possession is on the grounds of school or daycare center. So, that's kind of the overview of where we are and where we've been, and now I'll hand it over to Sean, and he'll go into a little bit of ideas and options in creating our ordinance for the future. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of me before I step down?
Did you happen to see the article in the IJ this morning about THCV?
THCV in IJ, I did not.
Brand-new variant that apparently has some medicinal qualities to it.
Okay, I will check that out.
Have a look.
Yeah.
Local company.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sean Kennings. I'm a planning consultant. I've been working with the town, I've been working with Phil. And just to go through sort of the second half of this presentation, as Phil talked about, so the purpose of the cannabis ordinance, obviously, is to create sort of the what, where, and how for if the town would allow some of the potential business licenses, potential cultivation for outdoor, or potential regulations for indoor cultivation. So, as you can see, sort of the basic types of activities to consider in this ordinance would be medicinal sales, non-medicinal sales, adult use, delivery, that's delivery into town, or delivery licenses for people to actually have a business where they can deliver, not necessarily starting from the town, but they would hold a license out of a business, out of a store somewhere in town, manufacturing, testing, and then again, the cultivation aspects. There are 19 different types of licenses that are administered by the state, and keep in mind that in order to be a business, especially in a town like Corder Madera, you'd have to have a state license specific to one of the various categories, and then you'd also have to get a license from the town. So, you'd have to be licensed both by the state and by the local municipality. And these license types are retailers, which is considered a storefront, i.e., you go in and you would purchase a product there at the store. There's retailer non-storefront, which is typically a delivery business. A distributor is actually the transport of resources, so in fact, you would house or store product, and then you would distribute it to the retailer. So, it's a non-retail, a non-storefront facility, but they manage the product, they have it in a warehouse-type facility, and they have to be licensed, have to have certain kind of vehicles to do that. And again, that's the transport capacity of it. Testing, obviously, is the concept behind making sure these products adhere to a certain sort of standard, such that all sort of medicinal, non-medicinal are all within a category listing. You would have labeling, all those types of, the ability to manage, you know, a certain level of consistency. And then microbusinesses. Microbusiness is actually an interesting sort of concept. It would have multiple of these different types of, so it could be a distributor, it could be a testing, and it could be a retailer, all in one particular facility, but there are also specifications that you'd have to adhere to to be a microbusiness. So, we'll just go through sort of the basic sort of concepts. Retail dispensaries is typical storefront, almost like a liquor store in some aspect, where you would go in, you would see your product. A lot of different municipalities throughout the Bay Area have medicinal, non-medicinal dispensaries. San Francisco, Berkeley, Oakland have non-medicinal facilities. Fairfax has a medicinal facility. This particular picture is a building in San Diego. They can be nondescript. They don't have to sort of call out that we're a cannabis, non-medicinal medicinal facility. Some of these facilities have a doorman, have security, a lot of them, we have to register, you have to be, show your identification. Of course, a non-medicinal facility, you'd have to be 21 to enter. So, in this case, the ordinance would be looking at whether or not you want to continue to prohibit medicinal, non-medicinal, or you want to explore permitting these facilities, and then as part of that, where would those facilities go? Which kind of district and town? State law right now requires a 600-foot buffer between schools and youth centers, so we would have to look at where those types of facilities could go, if that was something that the town wanted to explore. Delivery, again, is the commercial transfer of cannabis and cannabis products to the customer. Again, you'd have to have a licensed operation to deliver. It'd have to be to a physical address. Certain companies now, or certain businesses now, you have to register with them, you have to show form of ID. The person buying the product have to be the person that receives it, you have to show ID when that person comes. The delivery vehicles themselves are not like pizza cars, they don't have a big marquee on top, they're not, you know, advertising as they're driving through, and many times they're very nondescript. In order to, so, for the delivery aspect of the business, that would be allowing somebody from Corder Madera to hold a delivery business and be transporting in and out of town. Right now, as Phil said, we don't prohibit delivery into town, and in fact, part of state law is you're not allowed to prohibit delivery vehicles from using town roads to go through. For instance, if you're going from Larchford to Mill Valley, we couldn't prohibit that because how do you sort of document which cars are coming and going? And in fact, state law, I think, is going to be modified pretty soon to mandatory allow delivery into towns, such that towns couldn't regulate, you know, prohibit delivery into the community. Processing and testing facilities, sort of a light industrial type use. The facility on top is in Nevada, the one on the bottom is in Berkeley. Again, sort of a nondescript aspect to it, not a real sort of advertising component to it. Again, these would be facilities that would be testing these products, working on products to adhere to a certain consistency or certain licensing expectation. And again, where would these locations go in town? How would they look? What's the sort of regulations for allowing them to exist? And again, in the processing and testing, same kind of thing with the distributors, again, it would be sort of, how do you license these particular facilities? What would be the regulations between how they come and go? And again, these would not be types of storefronts where someone could come and purchase a product at these facilities. Now, the personal cultivation aspect of it, again, the state law allows individuals to grow indoor, so you cannot prohibit indoor personal cultivation. And again, the state law allows for six plants within a private residence, has to be locked, so it can be on a property, but it has to be in a structure that's not open to the public or open to the outdoors. So, it's either a secure greenhouse or other structure on the same parcel. If you have like a multi-unit parcel, it's only on one property, it's not multiple residents on that property, although I believe like a multifamily residential building, the owner of that building can prohibit the indoor cultivation for that typical residence. You can regulate, reasonably regulate indoor cultivation, and I'll get to that in a minute, but you can also regulate and prohibit outdoor cultivation. And outdoor cultivation, we've talked about it, sort of like a chicken coop. You know, where can it be on the property? Is there a smell violation? Is there a sight violation? Could you see it from a public street? Does it have to be a certain setback from neighbors or from structures? So, much like how chicken coops or keeping of chickens in an urban area, that's kind of like the same sort of construct for the regulations for outdoor cultivation. So, for indoor cultivation, the types of regulations that we could explore, such that, you know, would somebody have to come into town and get a permit to do it, even though it's allowed sort of a management of a database, assessing how much electrical power that the structure is designed to draw, you know, whether or not you need a certain sort of amperage for the... the lighting and for the cooling systems? Using of generators and extension cores, would it be prohibited, required, that kind of thing? Making sure that there's no water damage or mold? And not using more water than reasonably required for anybody else that would have sort of a greenhouse facility? Again, complying with fire and building codes and ventilation and filtration systems, or tenants having authorization from their landlord. So like Phil said, we had two workshops in September. We had a Wednesday, Wednesday evening, eighteen, Corder Madera residents was well-attended. There was sort of an interesting discourse. We had a similar event on that, the following Saturday, fifteen Corder Madera residents showed up. Chief Norton, who's here tonight, was at the Wednesday workshop. We made similar presentation, we fielded questions, we had a lot of back and forth. Actually, it was kind of an interesting sort of lively discussion between sort of, I would say, fifty-fifty between pro and anti prohibition and regulation of cannabis in the town. Again, there were parents, there was individuals, there were medical doctors, people who've worked in the industry, people have treated people with addiction issues, people from the business from out of town who were sort of advocating. And again, as Phil said, those videos and handouts are on the town's website. The summary of the public opinion, and Phil will go through it in the staff report, was from early September to early November. It was publicized in the town newsletter, the Reader Board next door. Four hundred and nine surveys were completed, and eighty-one percent were residents of the town. And Phil will get into those specifics about what the survey, what sort of the results of that survey were.
One clarification, I think there was eighty-one percent homeowners and fourteen percent renters.
Okay.
Just, so I think there were more of the respondents than eighty-one percent
Correct, sorry.
Were Corder Madera residents.
Eighty-one percent homeowners.
I think so.
Part of what we've been asked over the process is, what do other municipalities in Marin County, what are they allowing or prohibiting? We've only really focused on Marin County, although Phil at the planning commission hearing talked about some of the Sonoma communities who are actually allowing retail or storefronts. But as you can see from this little diagram here, most municipalities allow for some sort of delivery into town as part of their ordinance. Some are medicinal-only. Non-storefront businesses, again, those are delivery-type businesses. Fairfax allows the non-storefront because they do have a medicinal dispensary in town. Santa Fel is allowing testing facilities, four licenses for that. And Marin County is allowing for four delivery licenses throughout the county. Again, Fairfax has the only medicinal-only walk-in storefront. There are four communities that allow outdoor cultivation. Again, it's got some regulations to it, you know, zoning ordinance setbacks. San Antonio has an interesting provision that it can't be smelled by anybody with a normal sense of smell. I think that's sort of an interesting kind of a statement. And again, Marin County allows for medicinal growth, medicinal cultivation. And then you see on the right there, those are the municipalities that allow for indoor cultivation, but have some degree of regulation, whether it's a building permit or type of regulation for building fire code. So again, tonight's presentation, the whole purpose of it is just to sort of give you this presentation, receive feedback, answer questions, but essentially is whether or not this community wants to have retail stores for medicinal, retail stores for non-medicinal, delivery services for medicinal, non-medicinal, whether you want to explore licenses for some of the other businesses, such as manufacturing, testing, distribution, and then whether or not you want to allow for indoor cultivation with regulation, or outdoor cultivation, whether it's prohibited or allowed with regulation. And so with that, I will hand it back over to Phil and he'll go through the survey. Yeah, any questions for me?
Actually, do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of quick questions. Do you know how many permits have already been issued? I remember reading in the paper, there was a certain number, like thirteen or seventeen in one of the neighboring jurisdictions. I thought you just said something about, I think it's Fairfax, Marin County, and San Rafael. Are those the three jurisdictions that have actually permitted it?
So I know that Fairfax has the non-medicinal, or the medicinal facility, excuse me. Santa Fel has-
And how many, do you know?
Just the one.
Okay.
The county has the four
Right.
...delivery licenses, and then Santa Fel has the four testing licenses. But I also believe they have a delivery license as well.
So all in, less than ten? I had thought I had read something that was significantly more than that.
There've been sixteen applications in San Rafael, from what I understand.
I see.
But I'm not sure that, how many of those have been granted? And I don't know that any of them is for a storefront.
Okay. And then the second thing was, you had quoted language in one of your slides about reasonable requirements or reasonable regulation or something like that. And I wondered, what were you lifting that, what is that quoted from? Is there some publication? Is it from the enacted statute? Or where is that? Why did you quote that? Reasonably regulate? What's that from?
I believe that's from the state guidelines, but it essentially says you have to allow for indoor regulation or indoor cultivation, but you can reasonably regulate it based on existing town codes or existing town provisions, such that you could make it consistent with your fire code or your building permit application. But you can't put provisions on top of what's allowed by saying you have to do something above and beyond the state allowance.
But that description appears within some sort of legislative comment to the enacted legislation? Or what specifically is issuing the publication?
Where did that get lifted? I'll have to go back and find it. I mean, it's been a couple of times since we've added this in, but-
Yeah, Councilmember Bailey, I don't have the exact ordinance where that came from, but it is referred to.
Is it like the state of California is using that term?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to kind of reiterate what Sean was saying, the reasonable, these are some examples of, quote, reasonable regulations that a municipality can put on indoor cultivation. That this is, these are Nevada's regulations. And so they've gone through the process and they've implemented, maybe not all of these, but they're in the process of implementing these. And so these are allowed, and the state didn't feel they were going too far in prohibiting indoor cultivation by imposing these.
Does that list appear in that same publication? Or is this list comprised of just what Nevada has done and gotten approved or something?
I believe this is just the list that Nevada came up with, or other jurisdictions have come up with, that they feel is reasonable regulation for their town.
Thank you.
If I may, I may be able to assist here. ALMA, which was the initiative measure that legalized adult use in the state of California, makes clear that local jurisdictions cannot reduce down from the six plants per residence requirement, or allowance that is given in ALMA. Although a landlord can say, "Not in my building." But the local jurisdiction can't say, "Well, we just don't want that here in our town." But it is clear under ALMA and the implementing regulations, as well as SB 94, that consolidates really what is going on separately with medicinal and non-medicinal, that jurisdictions can reasonably regulate the conditions for allowing that type of indoor growth. So in other words, you can't say, "We're not going to allow you to do your six plants." But you can say, "We're going to reasonably regulate it for health and safety purposes." So building code violations, making sure that electrical is up to snuff, making sure that water usage is not excessive based on six plants, which may suggest that really there's a lot more than six plants there. Those are the typical kinds of regulations. And so statewide, a lot of jurisdictions are taking a look at what is reasonable and what isn't. And certainly, if the council wants to move forward with this, we would assist staff in taking a little bit of a deeper dive on what guidance the state has given and where we think that we are really in a good spot in terms of the types of regulations and maybe what are other areas that other jurisdictions are doing, but we're not sure whether the state will ultimately, or a court would ultimately determine, maybe they went too far.
Thank you, Teresa. That's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. If we were to issue some sort of license for indoor growth for the six plants, would that information be? If we were to regulate the six plants, would that information be available in a public records request?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so-
It would all be public.
The folks would lose whatever privacy they wanted.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, Phil, back to you.
Thank you. Okay.
If I may, I'm sorry.
No, I don't know.
Can we go back to slide? It was either twenty-two or twenty-three. And there was just one thing I wanted to clarify. It's this chart right here. So the two columns on the far right, the outdoor cultivation and the indoor cultivation, this is talking about cultivation for personal use. This is not talking about a commercial cultivator. So currently, you do not allow in Corder Madera any commercial cultivation. What is being allowed here in these last two columns is personal, and the state is very clear that once you get over a certain amount, whether or not you think you're a business, you're a business for purposes of the state, and you would need to have a license, not only from, you'd need to have a license from the state, and you would need to comply with whatever commercial zoning requirements there are. So again, these two categories are really talking about personal cultivation.
Thank you, Teresa. So I just wanted to, before I go into the survey results, I just wanted to highlight some of the items in the staff report, mainly the summary of the October 23 planning commission hearing, which was well-attended and held here, of course. And overall, the planning commission, the general consensus was that the town should allow indoor cultivation as allowed by the state. And the planning commission did not express a desire to have additional regulations on indoor cultivation. And they also felt that they should allow outdoor businesses or outdoor delivery businesses to bring product into Corder Madera. And four of the five commissioners recommended that no other types of cannabis businesses should be allowed within the town. So it was the general consensus of the commission. Other items that were discussed, there was discussion of buffers between commercial cannabis and residential uses. As Sean mentioned, the state says, yeah, need a minimum of 600 feet. That can certainly be increased if the town wished that. And there was also some discussion and some questions about whether either one of the shopping malls had any interest in having any type of cannabis businesses. I reached out to both centers and neither of them had been approached by businesses, and neither of them felt that their ownership was interested in having any type of cannabis business at this time in either center. There was a general concern expressed by the commission and the public of potential impacts of having cannabis in the town of Corder Madera and its impact on minors, individuals under 21, and a real concern about what was called the normalization of cannabis, which many people felt has happened with alcohol, and concerned if that could be the potential future. That mainly is the main part of the staff report I wanted to highlight that we didn't already touch upon. And then lastly, I did want to talk about, just highlight some of the survey results. Again, we had four hundred and nine responders, and much of this is in the staff report, but I'll just kind of highlight, in terms of ages, we had the whole gamut, from, you know, age thirty basically on up, and about, just about a fifth of folks were over sixty-five. So we had a variety of different respondents. Majority of folks had voted yes for Prop 64, and back in 2016. In terms of personal use, sixty percent said they do not use cannabis at all, and the other forty said they use it in some way. Again, you could check more than one, so certainly may individuals use it for medical and non-medical purposes. But I think the highlight of this lies at sixty percent claimed, stated that they don't use it at all. In terms of supporting medicinal-only dispensaries, had about sixty-two percent were supportive of that type of business. Non-medicinal retail stores, just a little over half were against having non-medicinal cannabis retail stores. And then just looking at the fiscal impact, in the survey, one could take the bar down below and slide it to the left or the right in terms of how, whether they felt the fiscal impact to the town would be positive or negative. And the average came out to be just there, the blue dot in the bottom. Obviously, a large percentage felt it was positive, a large percentage felt it would have no, had no opinion, and then another said it would be a negative impact. In terms of supporting outdoor cultivation, approximately, you know, two-thirds say yes to, or sixty-three percent in support of outdoor cultivation with some restrictions. And then the, now the question we asked is, did you feel that outdoor cultivation would increase crime or have an effect on crime? And a large number of respondents said it had no effect. And again, on the bottom is your average slightly having, you know, a slight increase in crime. And that concludes the part of the public opinion survey. And again, the main thing staff is looking for from the council this evening is direction on how you would like us to move forward in drafting our ordinance, whether you'd like, you know, retail stores, whether you'd like delivery, whether you like manufacturing or testing, and then what type of restrictions, if any, you'd like on personal cultivation, both indoor and outdoor. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and certainly here to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, if you can leave that up for the-
Absolutely.
...was we're discussing it, that'd be helpful. So first, we have questions for Phil, yes?
Sorry, just one question. Phil, while we were chatting, I found the article from the IJ that says San Rafael have granted licenses to sixteen cannabis businesses. So is that, are you aware of that? Or is that, was that article, I mean, could be the IJ's got it wrong, I don't know.
It could, I wasn't aware they had granted that many licenses.
It says August 6th, 2018, just if you want to look at it later.
Okay, I will check that out. That's not to say, of course, that those, you know, businesses exist or have opened shop, but I can certainly look into that and get more details.
I just, if we're trying to get a sense of industry practices-
Right.
-looks like San Rafael is going full into this. So, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody else? I had one. Phil, for you, the survey, I just wanted to be clear, the survey was voluntary, right? You had to see it and you decided you wanted to fill it out.
Correct. It was voluntary.
And it is not necessarily then, I worked in market research for a long time, so I pay attention to surveys.
Sure.
It's not necessarily a representative sample of the town's population, it's a representative sample of people who are interested enough and saw that there was a survey who decided to respond to that survey. Would that be a fair evaluation of how you would characterize the results and who the target was?
Yes, again, also not being a survey expert, right, we had four hundred respondents.
But it's voluntary.
Absolutely voluntary.
They had to see, they had to see that it was advertised and they decided they were interested enough to take the time to fill the survey out.
Right.
We need to go out and try to get a representative sample of the population.
Mr. Mayor, the way we would say that is, we would say it's not a statistically significant sample.
Yes.
So we can't say, you know, that it, as you mentioned, it doesn't represent fairly the entire population. But at the same time, I do think there's some merit in the representation of the data.
I'm not denying it, Teresa, I'm just asking for clarification on how-
Yeah, it's not statistically significant sample.
How we got the results and how people were asked about it. Do you have a question?
Yes, and it's really in response to what was just said. I acknowledge that it was a sort of a special circumstance of reaching out, but there were many different ways that they successfully reached out. I actually went online and asked the question of, what is a statistically significant number to conduct a survey of either 6,700 registered voters, which we have, or 9,800 people, which we have? And interestingly, the research would point out that to get a statistically significant sample of either of those two populations, 363 to 370 people would constitute a statistically significant sample with a ninety-five percent confidence of reliability to within plus- with a 95% confidence of reliability to within plus or minus five percentage points. That, you can duplicate that same research for what it's worth. The only other...
Councilmember Coonhart, the one thing you're missing out is, in order for it to be statistically significant, it has to be a random sample. So, that's the only part that you missed. That number is correct. It's in the 350 range. We did have a high number of respondents, but if you don't select them randomly from the population of registered voters or from the total population, you can't have a confidence interval of anything above zero.
Okay, and the only other thing I'd point out is that just about 5% of the total were 30 or under in age.
Did you have a question then, David, or that was just a comment on?
I, I'm raising, I'm trying, I'm trying to address the question of, is this... What's the nature of this survey and how does it reflect?
We're asking questions of staff right now. Thanks. Are there any other que...? Yeah, you had one?
Yeah, if I could just confirm, public intoxication by cannabis is illegal, correct?
And then, I had a question, either for Phil or maybe Todd. What are the sales tax implications of other cannabis businesses in the state? Do we have any information on that, or?
It's a moving target, as you know, with our recent kind of overview at the MCCMC dinner we had a few months ago. It's a cash-only business. And so, you know, these businesses aren't allowed to have bank accounts, and legislation is going through now where they potentially could. So, being cash-only businesses are very difficult. And so, the numbers are very difficult to, I couldn't give you a range. We've looked up and down the state. I will give you, the closest thing possible to it is the delivery business. Sausalito is the one that did a recent survey and study on it. And if they had a delivery business within Sausalito and outside, they estimated the potential revenues to be somewhere in the $300,000 range. But really, it's a moving target, and again, the cash-only is very difficult, so.
I have some numbers, if you want them, from sample cities. Most recently, San Diego's collected 2.2 million. They project up to 5.9 million. Sacramento is in the 2.9 million range. And then, a city closer to home and much smaller, Santa Rosa, in their first quarter, collected 115,000. So, these are just some numbers of what's happening in the state.
Those are actually, those are excise taxes. They're not sales taxes. So, in order to have an excise tax, you would have to go to the voters. And that, that's a process, it's basically a special business license on the privilege of doing business within the jurisdiction. It would need to go to the voters. But many of those measures have been quite successful. And so, again, it's not the sales tax, but it is an excise tax. Certainly, on cannabis businesses.
Thank you.
There, local jurisdictions are preempted from imposing an additional sales tax on businesses, but not an excise tax.
So, if we had a business in town, would it be... If we had a business in town, it would be covered by our existing sales tax and our existing override tax? Or would we have to go back and get a special voter to populous?
If you wanted it to be an excise tax, you would have to go back to the voters. If you had a business in town, I would need to look at and determine to what extent the sales, the existing sales tax would apply to that, because there are restrictions on imposing sales tax on cannabis businesses. I would need to, I would need to look at that issue, and I can come back with you on that. But certainly, if you wanted to do an excise tax, and you can call out cannabis businesses, it's a much different type of business. There are different issues with regulating them, different costs associated with regulating them. Many jurisdictions have been successful in moving forward with a valid measure and that gets approved by the voters that puts an excise tax on businesses within your jurisdiction. If you're not allowing businesses within your jurisdiction, then it wouldn't, you would have no one to tax. So, that you're talking really about a brick and mortar, which would be different than a delivery business that has their brick and mortar building outside of the jurisdiction, but simply delivers the product within the jurisdiction. So, again, if you're talking about brick and mortar, then you can have a conversation about a potential excise tax.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but Teresa, I'm deducing from the way you use that word in context that excise, as in excise tax, refers to some sort of taxation to a specialized industry? Or can you define what that word means for me?
An excise tax, it's actually a term of art. An excise tax is really for the privilege of doing business within the jurisdiction. And many jurisdictions have a business license tax. That's something that often you hear, but it's really an excise tax. A lot of jurisdictions already have those in place. A number of jurisdictions have created a separate, special excise tax on the cannabis businesses because of the increased costs associated with regulating those businesses. For example, if you were going to allow manufacturing, you might think of all of the building code regulations and inspections that may be attenuated with that type of business because of the risks associated with those businesses. So, up and down the state, many jurisdictions that are allowing these businesses to operate will impose a business license tax essentially on this particular industry, which it only applies to this industry. They may have another general business license tax that applies on other industries, or they may not have a business license tax at all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, one more if I may. I just wanted to, I was curious. Why is it that cannabis businesses are not allowed to have bank accounts? Is that because cannabis is illegal at the federal level?
Federal regulations and banking regulations preclude it.
Okay, thank you.
David, did you have any others? Okay, then we will open it up to the public. So, now it's time for the public to speak. If you can limit your comments to three minutes, and if you could also please give your name and where you're from before you speak, that would be helpful. If there's going to be, I'm imagining we're going to have more than one. If you guys want to line up behind the microphone, that's always helpful too, to kind of keep things moving. Thank you so much.
Good evening, counsel. Peter Chase of Corder Madera. I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a member of the Planning Commission. I want to make that perfectly clear. I do not preclude that at some point there might be a worthwhile ordinance to consider for the town of Corder Madera. But I would advocate at this time that I don't think there's sufficient appropriate data to go forward with creating an ordinance at this time. I've submitted to you a number of pieces of information, including various reports from the National Academy of Sciences. And one of the handouts that was before the commission was the Model Local Ordinance for Cannabis Taxation in California. These are fairly significant documents. And they all come around to various cautionary tales. Just for the sake of clarification, on a website called Cannaboid Clinical, it clarifies that currently, there are only four cannabinoids approved by the FDA for use in the United States. There are thousands of cannabinoid drugs available in the United States, but only four have gone through testing. So, what that means is that because of the Schedule I differentiation, cannabinoids aren't being tested at the federal level, state level, or any other level appropriately. Yet, all, it's growing. And I think that I would encourage everybody considering an ordinance to wait for more evidence to come forward that bifurcates either THC or CBDs and so forth. Schedule I drugs are those drugs that have no medicinal value and can be abused by definition. So, at this point, THC would fall into that category, and CBD might not fall into it. But at this point, National Academy of Sciences points out that marijuana is the second most abused drug in the United States after alcohol. So, that means that it's in the realm of public health, not just somebody being stoner or stoned. It is a problem, it is a public health problem. And I would encourage the town of Corder Madera not to go down this road until we really have better information. So, I've put some of these things together for the public and you guys to look at and how the different impacts are assessed, psychosocial, physical, mental health, and so forth. They do acknowledge that there is a therapeutic value to CBD, but it hasn't been defined well enough. So, I would say that we really should wait and craft something in a year or two or three when the programs and the information is better available. I think that even this document, Model for Local Cannabis Taxation, points out that cannabis policy should be grounded in public health protection. And I think that that's a very important statement. Is my time up over there? "Cautiously legalized to reduce the social harm of illegality, but the cannabis sale and consumption should not be normalized." So, that's where I stand. And I would say, let's wait for the information and product to get better developed, better defined, and put that upon the industry and the government.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Linda Hen. I'm a resident of Kent Field. However, I work, live, work out, and frequent Corder Madera. I also work for the Coalition Connection, working to reduce underage alcohol and drug use. As you know, from a document our coalition sent, there is a lot of public health research out there pointing to the negative impact of cannabis legalization in a community, as well as a letter you probably received from Dr. Matt Willis, the Public Health Officer, documenting further public health detriment to our county, mainly amongst our youth, and that's my primary concern. I commend Corder Madera for your due diligence and effort to put forward and seek input from the community. Trying to determine what is best for Corder Madera while adhering to the desires of voters is not easy. As you move forward, your task will be to put policy that protects the community. I urge you to continue to seek input, research and data from other communities. We already have input from Sonoma and other California cities that rushed into this, and they're experiencing higher rates of crime and other negative impacts. I urge you to talk to them. We've also learned quite a bit from Colorado, and they've been at this for over five years. And the most recent report from them from 2018 shows an increase in marijuana-related traffic deaths. They increased 151%, while all Colorado traffic deaths increased 35%. Since recreational marijuana was legalized, traffic deaths involving drivers who tested positive for marijuana more than doubled. Colorado, past month, marijuana use for ages 12 and older is ranked third in the nation and is 85% higher than the national average. The yearly rate of emergency department visits related to marijuana increased 52% after the legalization of recreational marijuana. I could go on and on about the negative impact. It goes on and on, what Colorado's experiencing, and their attorney general has attested to that. And I just urge you to, let's learn from people that have legalized it. And until, like the gentleman before me said, until we know more, let's not put Corder Madera and neighboring communities, like mine, at risk by legalizing, by doing more than having personal indoor cultivation and delivery. I believe adults should have access to marijuana. It is their legal right. And I believe that those that need it medicinally should have access to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak? No? Karen, yes?
Yeah.
Just please get up and come on up to the microphone.
So, I just, Karen Gribosi, Corder Madera, Meadow Creek Station. I appreciate what Peter had to say and what Linda had to say, so I'm not going to reiterate what they said, because they said it more eloquently than I could. And the only other thing that I wanted to say is with regard to the survey is that it, what it says is that many people responded. That's basically what that survey says. We don't know if they lived where they said they lived. We don't know if they're the age that they said that they are. We don't know that their usage is what they say that it is. We don't even know if they're duplicates in the responses. So, while the survey might kind of show some drift one way or the other, it's really not science. So, that's just what I wanted to add with regard to the survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Henry, born and raised in Corder Madera. I work and earn as well. And I believe people are worried about the welfare of the youth, of the future. They want to make sure cannabis is used safely and properly. They want to make sure their housing prices don't decrease because they fear that a dispensary might raise crime. These are all warranted, but we have to make sure that we step into the future and we're progressive with how we regard our citizens and how they put things into their body. When there's outdoor cultivation of cannabis, the sky isn't falling. People have been doing it for over 20 years in Corder Madera, since 96, when medical was passed. I walk through every neighborhood in Corder Madera, and I know that cannabis is being grown outside. But I can't see it. I can't smell it. It's discreet. People aren't putting signs saying, "I'm a grower," you know, or weed leaves. And there's millions of potential tax revenue from a dispensary. We just have to get the facts down and be logical and not use red herring fallacies that just appeal the raw emotion and not logics of economics and everything, so. I could be more eloquent and articulate and be more informative with facts and give all these statements about how the sky is falling in Colorado. But I just want to make sure that we use facts and logic instead of raw emotion, so.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? And we're going to close.
Hey, Bob, before you close it, if he's willing, Chief Norton, are you willing to make a couple of comments? Or would you rather not speak yet on the issue? Are you okay with that, Bob?
Yeah, absolutely.
If our police chief has a perspective, it's important to us.
I don't have anything prepared.
Mike, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. Could we pull up the one graphic that was all the different things that were being considered before the timer went up? Just to quickly kind of hit on a few little things. I have spoke and been to these presentations in Larkspur and San Onofre as well. So, this is kind of my third town going through it. In terms of the delivery, just from a law enforcement perspective, we know it's been going on for a while from outside the jurisdiction. And it's, you know, honestly, we haven't had any issues with the ones starting from outside. It's similar to Amazon, basically. It's not a FedEx truck. They're not well-marked and cruising in and targets like that. The concern I would have for locating a delivery service in our town is it would become common knowledge where the origin is. And this being a cash business still, I think my perspective would change down the road if that legislation's passed and it's no longer a cash business. But we do, although we have low crime, we do have crime in this town, and we are an easy target. And we are right next to the East Bay. We're kind of the first town over. And what you would have is probably pretty quickly, it'd be common knowledge where these vans or vehicles or whatever are coming and going. And if you chose to be a crime of opportunity, you could either get a car leaving with a shipment of edibles and marijuana, or you could wait for the cars returning and get a car full of cash, from what I understand how these work. It's a cash-in-hand business. I may be mistaken on that, but that's kind of my understanding of how the deliveries are working. So, that's my concern with locating a, starting a delivery service in town. I don't really have any strong opinions on the manufacturing, testing, processing. In terms of personal cultivation, the indoor is allowed. I would actually be against putting a bunch of restrictions on that other than what there already is, because I don't think the town resources, including us, are set up to really regulate that. And you encounter a whole host of constitutional issues in terms of regulating that. You might have the fire department possibly be involved with some electrical or something like that, which I think they already would be. And outdoor, the only concerns there, and the one gentleman said, you know, it's all over Corder Madera, but you don't see it, and that's good. And we occasionally get a call since 1996 where it's more of the odor issue, or the people are really blatantly, they don't, it's smelly to them too, so they put it downwind up against the fence, and it's going right into the neighbor's house. And we've had to deal with that, and that's realistic. I have seen some things, I think, that talked about keeping the plants very low at ground level. And I don't know a ton about growing marijuana, but every plant I've ever seen does not grow low at ground level. And it usually pops up above the fence, unless it's in a contained area. But I do know in the summer, when it's harvest time, it can get quite stinky. And it is a noxious thing that we'd get called on routinely, just for that nuisance issue more than anything. And also, if it is visible from the street, obviously, if you want to talk about, you know, minors having access to it or things like that, that could be... know, minors having access to it or things like that, that could be an issue. And then in terms of just retail stores, you know, not to be too looking into the future, but kind of, you know, I'm a big, I like Amazon. I like getting things delivered. I do a lot of my Christmas shopping this way. It might not be popular, you see, but I think we're at a day and age where pretty much anything you get, if you want to regulate it and make it delivery only, it's quite feasible and quite possible. And I'm not sure we need to have a storefront for this type of thing at this point.
Chief, could you also add? We had, if I may, Mayor, can I ask?
Please, go ahead.
Chief, could you cover? We did have a dispensary here for...
I think we had two at one point. They were, so they were, from my understanding, I was a, I'm not even sure I was a supervisor when those started, but I do remember actually working graveyard and having a few run-ins. But I believe those were actually just kind of popped up without getting a business license, and it was...
They actually missed, gave missing information on their business license, and then opened up. Yeah.
Well, anyways, if I could continue, I will say that in terms of those businesses, they were located, I believe both were over on the Tamil Vista area, across from DMV. There's some commercial areas. We never, you know, we kept an eye on it. We never really had any issues with the businesses themselves. What we did start finding, though, was a lot of juveniles we were contacting had the marijuana from the businesses in the containers. I don't think the businesses really ever, honestly, I think they were hardworking. I don't think they sold to minors, but I think what was happening was eight people 18 years and older were buying it and then selling then to the minors. So, for what it's worth.
Could I ask?
Can I ask a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, do you have any sense, or you feel you have any legitimate sense and understanding of crime rate increase or decrease around this topic in Sonoma or anywhere else?
I don't know anything about what's going on in Sonoma or Santa Rosa. I can tell you, since the legalization happened, we have been seeing a lot more driving under the influence, and to the point where we're radically changing how we train our officers. We kind of knew that was coming. We didn't see a tremendous spike with the passing of the medicinal in 96, but recently it's been a major problem. And probably half the people that we're pulling over and arresting for DUI now have at least some element of marijuana on board. It's really hard for us to tell.
With alcohol as well, or?
Yeah, it's a combination sometimes, or it's one or the other. But that's mainly what we've noticed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? No? Okay. Public comment is still open. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a public comment? If, yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we need you to come to the microphone and give your name. Sorry.
James Seraphin from Larkspur. Is there a possibility to get the, a report of the study that was done, and also the methodology within, which we were referring to earlier on?
You're talking about the survey?
Is that, is that a?
That's available, yeah. It's available on the town website. The report they gave tonight is on the town website.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak? No? Oh, we got one more.
I'll just make a very brief comment. I gave some, my name's Andrew Middleditch. I live over in East Corner Madera on Meadow Ridge, and I gave some comments at one of the working group sessions earlier. But I'm a psychiatrist with a practice in San Francisco, and so tracked some of the research around marijuana. And there is a, I'll just make a brief comment about one of the growing concerns around marijuana, which is as it affects the teenage brain. And there was a new study that came out in the American Journal of Psychiatry just this past, last month, actually. And it was studied on 3,800 kids in the Montreal area, ages, following them from age 13 to 17, and doing, you know, a battery of cognitive assessments on them. And it did show, as you might expect, cognitive impairment in the short term around people who were reporting high levels of marijuana use. But what was most concerning about this study was that it was showing long-term impairments among higher users of marijuana among this teenage cohort, which was suggesting a neurotoxic effect, which obviously is not a, not a good thing. And, you know, so there was a long-term effect in the sense of, you know, a year or more on things like working memory and impulse control. So, you know, there is a real sort of safety for the community concern around it, which I think sort of supports the notion of limiting normalization of marijuana by, you know, not having a public dispensary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Okay, then we will close the public comment section, and we will bring it back to the council for discussion. And again, just to remind everybody, if you can put that, oh, tell me up, great, thank you. We're providing direction to staff, so we're basically having a discussion about what we heard and what we think should happen. So I'm opening it up to whoever would like to start, if anybody would.
I'll start. I just, I appreciate all the comments, by the way, thoughtful comments from everybody present here today. It's my own sense that I'm always open to hear new information and to continue to follow whatever best practices are, but I would really be disinclined to expand the availability of marijuana within our town beyond personal cultivation within indoor use, which is, I think it currently is. So, I mean, I'm always happy to consider new information, but based on everything I've heard so far, as well as what I read in the very good staff report, and it just doesn't seem to be an appropriate time to go bigger into the marijuana field. That's my own sense.
Okay. Since you brought that up, I just, I wanted to add something actually to what Chief Norton had said. You were talking about the dispensary and use among youth. I was on the council when that dispensary opened, and they did it by putting misinformation on the application. And we were involved in a long legal closed session thing with them for weeks, trying to figure out what to do. So before going into a meeting one night, closed session, I was having dinner, and I asked my daughter, who was at Redwood High School. By the way, it's her birthday today. Happy birthday, Olivia. This was many, this was eight years ago. And I said, "Have you heard of the marijuana dispensary in town?" And she said, "You mean the one across from the DMV?" And I said, "Yeah, actually, that's the one." And she said, "Yeah, kids go there at lunchtime, and they buy brownies and candy, and they come back and they sell them in the parking lot." So that kind of informed what I went into the closed session with that night. So, you know, that's what I think we're talking about when we talk about normalization, you know, when stuff gets accessed and it's, you know, more widely used. And that would be my concern as well, is I already know, and just in the interest of full disclosure too, I'm the co-chair of the Coalition Connection, and before that, I chaired the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth. We were and still are trying to reduce alcohol and drug use among youth. So I have probably more experience than I want in this particular area, but we already have a very, very high, above-average use of marijuana among high school students here. It's way above the national norm. And normalization and access, I think, would only drive that higher. And the other issue that we have learned a lot about and done a lot of studies on is the much higher levels of THC that we're dealing with in marijuana now, which is, as Mr. Middleditch just referred to, seems to be causing some additional issues. So I would concur with you that I, you know, would not want to see us allowing medicinal or non-medicinal use, and I can go into more detail a little later, but I'm going to let anybody else speak who wants to talk, so I'm going to yield.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just so I know what I should say now and what I should wait for, were you planning on doing like a sort of general thoughts now and then going through sort of item by item on this graphic?
Let's just do general thoughts. I mean, we're having kind of a discussion that seems to be working, and then we can kind of try to summarize it later and see where we're all coming out. If we're all coming out in the same place or something close.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would say that my thoughts, based on what I've heard and learned so far, and like Sloan said, thanks to everybody in the, in the public who's come forward with really helpful comments, whether it's in our workshops or by writing to the town, have been really helpful. My feeling is that I do recognize the public health threat that cannabis poses, and I think that's a serious issue. But what I struggle with when it comes to regulating it is I have trouble seeing the difference between cannabis and alcohol. And if you guys want to share your opinions on this, that would be fantastic. But I wonder if we're talking about regulating cannabis differently than we regulate alcohol, does that mean that we, are we thus acknowledging that we are under-regulating alcohol? Or, I mean, I think, you know, everybody has, I think, a somewhat different opinion on the, the relative dangers or harms of cannabis and alcohol. But I'm just curious, because to me, I mean, we've got a liquor store across the street from Town Hall.
We do.
So I, my perception is that, well, cannabis is, obviously, has potential, you could easily say it's already, in many cases, a public health concern. My personal perception is that alcohol is much more of a public health concern, and yet that is regulated less than we are considering regulating cannabis. So I'd just kind of like us to examine that issue.
Okay.
Can I, can I pick up on that excellent statement by Mr. Beckman? My kids, who are much more informed on this topic than I, have repeatedly made the point that, hey, alcohol is sold everywhere in town. It's sold everywhere. A third of grocery stores is alcohol now. If we're, if that is freely available and very much normalized, what, why would a substance that is less dangerous to your health and less dangerous to violence creation and, and some other things, be worthy of much tighter regulation? So that's the challenge, that's one of the challenges that I have. Another challenge is this. In 2016, the vote in the state was about 57 percent in favor of Prop 64. In the county of Marin, it was 69.6 percent in favor. Now, a 70-30 vote is, is pretty overwhelming. I mean, there are a lot of things that we arrive at, a lot of conclusions that we arrive at as public voters. There are very few, other than the paramedic tax support, that gain, which was high, sales tax support, yes, that gain as high support as that did in Marin County with a 70-30 vote in favor. And so in, in that context, what do we do? And are we being, let's say, equally, if you will, permissive or restrictive as we are with other aspects of life that we all, all enjoy? I, I have noticed, and by the way, I think the staff did a great job of undertaking this outreach, of having the public sessions on different days of the week, and you gained a lot of advice, as you, as was indicated, pretty balanced and mixed advice. One of the most valuable things to me, I think that Mr. Chase advanced this, as well as Matt Willis advanced it, which was the National Academy of Sciences rundown, which gives a very good assessment of the pros and cons of different forms of cannabis for treating pain, chemotherapy, multiple sclerosis, controlling epileptic fits, controlling other kinds of, of spasmodic symptoms, potentially helping with PTSD, potentially helping with the reduction of the consumption of opioids, which apparently is a statistical reality in Colorado and in Washington, where there is experience of those. There, then, on the other side, there are increases of vehicle crashes. There's increased DUI. There's increase of other issues with it. So it's not a clear, there's nothing, a clear green light that I see here in the medical information. And I think most importantly, Matt Willis, the Public Health Officer for the county, has indicated essentially the same thing that Peter Chase has said. We don't have enough evidence, and because it's been illegal, studies haven't been legal to be conducted. So we need more time to take this in and, and deal with it. A couple of, one, one question that I had of the discussion that I didn't, I think it was a little unclear coming forward. It was clear that we're not particularly interested in, at least the Planning Commission is not particularly interested in going indoors and regulating indoors except for standard health and safety, but that one of the charts said, "We permit outdoor cultivation," and one of the thoughts that was silent was whether or not the Planning Commission discussion said that outdoor cultivation should be allowed or not allowed. And I'm curious what that, what, just because I didn't hear the clear view on that. Curious what that was. Got a couple of other questions or points, but I think they're much smaller in, in context.
Does anybody want to? Jim?
Well, let me see. I'm old enough to remember what my friends and I were like in high school and college. And my impression, the chief risk of marijuana at that time, and the way it would ruin your life is if you got arrested and then got a felony conviction. And I do have some friends who experienced that, so I'm glad that we have decriminalized it in California. In terms of which businesses to allow in, in Corner Madera, I don't think we have enough information to decide which businesses we should allow or not allow. We know we can't stop deliveries, so I continue to support not even trying. Also, if we were to try and legalize any of these businesses, we'd put our staff in the awkward position of, say, Sheriff Doyle, who's having to dance between state law and federal policy and not get in trouble with either side. And I would just as soon not put our town employees into that awkward position. So I guess it's, I would support going forward and continuing to allow delivery. I don't think outside growing should be allowed, but enforcement, I guess, would be based on complaints. One thing I would like our building department to look into is, with the Nevada ordinance, is the risk to homeowners from indoor growing sufficient that we should step up and do regulations like, are the electrical circuits adequate and so on? But my gut reaction right now is that what folks do in, in the privacy of their own home is their own business, so, anyway, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else wish to?
Could I, could I raise one other thing that was just reminded?
Go right ahead.
Which is this? The article that appeared today that a company in, in Nevada is advancing with FDA licensing, exploration of THCV, a particular, rather unique slice of the ingredients of cannabis, which has high promise apparently for diabetes and weight control and some other things, potentially, who knows? These are things that are still being uncovered. And so it called to mind, one of the things that, and I think one of the things that it has been expressed as a risk, is that we don't know what we're getting when somebody makes an acquisition. You don't know what the contents are. And you also don't know how polluted it is with pesticides and other things. So it seems to me that a missing ingredient in the business landscape is adequate testing laboratories and certification and labeling and quality control, if you will. I don't, I would not be opposed to that appearing somewhere in, in Marin County, or in a couple of places in Marin County. I wouldn't even be opposed to it appearing in a rather anonymous laboratory in our town if it adds significantly to the understanding of exactly what that, what this stuff is and what is being sold, legally or illegally.
Sounds like you're, go ahead.
I mean, I feel like we sort of got a consensus going here, which is that, but I don't, except for one question, if you don't mind me just asking the group.
Sure, please, go ahead.
I'm not a fan of retail stores in our town, but I didn't hear you guys comment on that. I feel like we, in our, so when I, delivery service, I think we're all, okay, you should only be out of town. In other words, we can't stop any delivery in our town even if we wanted to, and I don't think we'd want to, but delivery service, we're sort of a consensus in there. The manufacturing, testing, processing facilities, I don't think that's really an issue in our town, and there's no reason why we, why we ought to be permitting it at this point that I can see. It's not really before us. Personal cultivation, I think we're all okay with the indoor. I'm not sure where we are with the outdoors. So to me, the re... So to me, the retail stores and the outdoor things are the ones that I just don't have a sense of it.
Okay.
You tell me. Did I characterize that right? Do people disagree with that?
I don't know. Does it, is he characterizing where, where we are? I don't know. I mean, I can, I can tell you that personally, I'm probably with you on most of that. I think prohibiting retail, I mean, continuing to prohibit retail makes sense. It's just normalization, I just think creates too much of a problem within the community with youth that we just want to make sure we avoid. I think regulating cultivation at home to some degree, I thought your comments were really good about that and helpful. I'm mainly concerned about fire because I know that that's been a problem in other communities when people start to put a lot of plants. So I would be concerned about fire, you know, regulating that somehow from the aspect of fire. I, I'm fine with continuing to allow delivery. Trying to stop it is ridiculous, right? I mean, we went through this when we, a year or two ago and.
Two years ago.
Yeah, and it's just, trying to regulate that is just impossible. So I wouldn't even try to do that. I understand your point, David, about processing and testing facilities, but we don't have huge land for that anyway. And I don't see what the benefit is of the town undergoing what I think would be considerable expense and time in trying to create a regulatory body or standards that would kind of control that. And I'm, I'm just not seeing the benefits of that, I guess. And I would probably like to see some kind of regulation on outdoor cultivation also, which I guess we don't have. I think we kind of missed that last time. But, you know, if it's causing complaints in neighborhoods, we should, we should have an ability to do something with that. So I don't know. I guess I'm kind of on the same page as you and.
I just was trying to figure, it seemed like we all agree, we don't have enough information at this time. And so whatever we do at this point, we're going to want to probably revisit it in a year or something.
Right. Well, actually, we're going to have to revisit it sooner than that.
Before September.
Yeah, our ordinance, you know, the.
But I think we're already at a point where with the, well, I don't know, maybe we're not at a point that we should.
The one thing, once we legalize a business, it's a lot harder to unlegalize it. Than to wait a few years.
Yeah.
And whoever, whatever council's there, on, serving at the time can then make a decision, okay, yeah, we want to go into the testing business or we want to go into the delivery business. The one thing, I do agree Marin needs a testing facility, but my impression for most manufacturing is you want the testing relatively close to where the distribution is. And so if we're going to have testing, then it should probably be near the processing facility and then near one of the deliveries. And I don't think we have the space for all three of those in town.
You know, you just made a really good point I wanted to bring, add to, which was when the dispensary opened, I think, eight years ago, we ended up settling out of court and they stayed open for three years. Because, as you said, I mean, the only way to get them to close, we were going to be faced with a trial. I guess I can't talk too much about it because it was all closed session, but we ended up settling and they stayed open for three years. Because it's very, very difficult and expensive.
So if you do allow a business and the business does come in and set up, and then you decide to pull it back, they would have, that business would have a non-conforming use and you would essentially be stuck with that business until they decide to move on or unless you convince them otherwise, probably through some monetary settlement. So with respect, I'm looking at your list. So if you're not sure what you want to do, there is a wisdom to err on the side of being a little conservative and figuring out what you want to do and then moving towards a more open stance. Because again, if you go too far with a business, it's very difficult to pull back. And if you have a business in town, you, you, even if you decide that was a mistake, you're sort of stuck with it. So with respect to number one, I would encourage you to think about that in deciding where is the right place to land. That would also be true of number three. With respect to number two, you have delivery services and there are really two categories under number two. You have those that would be, again, located within your jurisdiction, essentially a brick and mortar. And that would be the same philosophy there, that if you are allowing a business to come in and establish themselves within your jurisdiction, if you then change your mind later, you were probably going to be stuck with that business for a while. With respect to businesses that are located outside of the jurisdiction but making deliveries within your jurisdiction, there is no non-conforming use problem. So currently, you do not have a restriction on deliveries coming in. Should you decide either now or three years from now that you don't want to allow deliveries, you could pass a regulation which would then ban the delivery and you would not have a non-conforming use issue because the business is not located here. They're just servicing customers here. With respect to number four, the personal cultivation, there is no non-conforming use problem. So again, you can, right now, we have, we don't have a restriction. You could impose a restriction. You don't have a non-conforming use problem. You could wait and see if there is an issue and then decide. So four and half of two do not present a non-conforming use problem.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's helpful. Did you want to say something?
Um, I was just, I wanted to clarify the mayor and council member Bailey's comment. So you guys, it sounded like, are okay with continuing medicinal deliveries? I was unclear if you're, what you're feeling on non-medicinal deliveries is.
I didn't really. You can't tell the difference.
I, I can't. I don't think we can regulate it.
Right, okay, okay, right.
Dope's dope.
So there's a, there's a first point of consensus, I think, right?
We can't, we can't build, we can't build a wall around town.
Right, right. So there's a first point of consensus on deliveries, right? That's, that's the delivery issue.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I wanted to respond to council member Bailey's query. As far as retail stores, I'm rather kind of as balanced, I think, as the public view is. And in advance of one of the workshop sessions and during one of the workshops, workshop sessions, there were two relatively senior residents who revealed to me that, and, and one in public, that they are very beneficial users of CBD oil for pain reduction and now have to drive to Fairfax to get that. I would be, I, I don't know what is wrong. I, I know very much what's wrong with smoking, okay? And I'm a real, I really don't like smoking of any kind, but particularly cigarettes and, and electronic cigarettes. But, but I'm not sure what's wrong with a business that sells oils and/or edibles. As long as they are, you know, properly quality controlled, I am not opposed to that kind of business. I think it could be handled just as well or better than any of the way, any of the places that we sell liquor. I agree with what's been said on the delivery service. I am not sure that a professional testing lab is, has to be inclusive of, of deliveries, but I'm not, I'm not thinking that, that we have any natural place for that or institution in town for that to occur. There are other biological research labs in our county that would make be better places for that. As far as personal cultivation, I am, I am very much opposed to us trying to regulate indoor or outdoor cultivation. I think that's what the seventy percent vote worked to approve as long as, you know, and I think reasonable, as, I used to have chickens too. So reasonable regulation of the, of the, and it would be mostly personal regulation of where that is grown. And it was obviously a small quantities that are, that we're talking about. So that's where I come out on the different individual items.
Okay. Thank you, David. So I don't think we have a consensus. I think we have some differences. Eli, do you want to say anything further?
Well, for the outdoor, could we agree that if there were complaints, you know, basically say you can, you can grow it outdoors unless it's a nuisance and define a nuisance as if we get X number of complaints?
Right.
You know, you.
That's the way we run a lot of, that's the way we run a lot of our town regulations, by the squeaky wheel.
Does that work for you?
No, but I, I'm happy to consider it further. I don't think we need to come to a conclusion on that.
I don't think we do either. I think providing some direction is.
And by the way, if I may, Mr. Bailey, I just wanted to respond to something you listed at the very beginning. I recognize and kind of agree that marijuana seems like analytically comparable to alcohol. But I don't think that that discussion is particularly relevant in trying to decide this ordinance. In other words, we don't need to dive into the larger picture about whether we ought to be regulating alcohol. We, we have more success in determining the scale and scope of the marijuana ordinance if we limit our discussion to what makes sense in the language presented to us in these four things for in our town.
You're not concerned your kids will call you a hypocrite?
You know, I'd like to think that our decision-making is for the benefit of the town.
It's going to happen, you know?
So anyway, that was, that my only, it's not that it's not a legitimate point, it's that I just think it's easy to get derailed in larger philosophical discussions.
Right, right. You're very wary of philosophy creeping into policy discussions. But I do like some logic underneath my policies.
Yes, sir.
Well, someone who grew up back east, a lot of states had package stores if you wanted to buy liquor, okay? My family, when they come out and visit and we wander through Safeway, they're dumbfounded that there's that much liquor for sale in a regular grocery store. And then my, you know, one of my sisters was amazed that they're selling it on Sundays. So, you know, it's, you know, California could tighten up on its liquor regulation, but I don't think we want to waste the energy sorting that out.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add?
I'm, I'm just unclear, what is the direction we're leaning towards giving when it comes to cultivation?
None.
Well, I think we have a difference of opinion. I think we have several of us who are saying that some regulation of indoor is probably good, as I had said specifically for safety reasons and fire. I don't think we're trying to restrict.
I think all five of us agree with that.
Yeah, I think so. In terms of outdoor, I think we're trying to prevent problems again with neighbors. Is that fair to say? And any kind of something that's disturbing, you know, visually or from a smell problem or anything like that. So I think, I think we're all in agreement on that. So that's good.
Indoor, I understand the safety and everything. I'm just worried about, in effect, people having to get, you know, licenses or permits for that. Do we have any comparable thing for any other construction activity within a house? In a hot tub, do you?
I would, I don't know. I, yeah, I would like to chime in that. It, it would be a unique situation for someone to come in and say, I, I want to grow something in my house. Normally someone come, you know, the most minor thing people do, they come in and say, I want to replace my toilet. You know, they want to replace my water heater and it's completely interior and, and no one sees it similar, but, you know, again, we would, we would probably have to come up with some type of standard, like what is acceptable in terms of electricity load? You know, how many, you know, 110 outlets versus, versus 220 outlets? Where the, like Nevada has done, you know, in what part of the building would it be located? Nevada, you can't convert, you know, a room into a growing area. You can't, can't convert a bedroom into a growing area. So it would definitely take some, take some thought, but we can certainly do the research and, and come back to you if, if that's the wish of the council.
Could you come up with a sort of guideline-type pamphlet that says, if you're going to grow indoors, don't do this?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I think that would be the way to go. Education rather than, you know, the carrot rather than the stick. Or, you know, again, educate people. The ideal would be someone would come in and want to get a permit because they want to do a legal grow and they want it to be safe.
Right.
The opposite side is they say, I'm going to do my legal grow. I don't want to go down and talk to the town. I'm just going to do it. So the ideal would be, you know, I want to do it safely.
Yeah, but, you know, sort of if you're going to have grow lamps, you got to have.
Right, ventilation.
Circuit box or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Phil, do you think you have direction or not really?
On, on indoor grows?
On all four of these.
All four of these.
Well, let's, let's take one at a time. So on indoor grows, what is, what is your direction?
I think we're saying that we're interested in some regulation on safety and making sure that it's safe.
Okay.
I don't know that we're all saying you're required to have a permit, but I'm not sure how else you keep it safe without getting a permit. I'm going to leave that to you guys, is what I would do.
How do we enforce code?
I, I don't know. We have to, that's what I'm saying. You leave it to staff to figure out. It's not our job to try to figure that out tonight. But I think we're concerned about safety. We want to make sure that it's safe and it's done safely. And then it doesn't turn into a fire hazard with giant grow lights and too much electricity and starts a fire.
Right.
That's burning down houses.
So the goal, I think it's important to say that the goal is safety, that the goal is not a deterrent.
Right.
That's, for me, that's an important distinction. Okay, and, and outdoor grows?
I think what we're saying is that we don't want it to become a nuisance or a problem for neighbors in any way, shape or form. And again, I would let, leave it to you guys to figure out what the best way is to, to do that, but I think that's.
Yeah, I'm not really persuaded that outdoor cultivation is something I'm comfortable with yet, but I'm happy to consider and see where we are with it. I think the access to minors and the smell issue, because every year the plants are going to mature. So there's, you're guaranteeing at least some period of time where there's an odor issue. You're going to guarantee that there's access to people who can hop a fence or who, if it's accessible to neighborhoods, to neighborhood kids, I don't know. I'm, the truth is, I haven't fully thought it through, but I, I'm not in the camp that this, I'm okay with this. I'm, I'm still working that through.
Okay.
And certainly the, the chicken coop analogy is a good one. You know, you, you have to have setbacks. And if, if it has to be twenty feet from property lines, if you have a tiny lot, you can't have it.
Okay.
So setbacks are one way to mitigate the, could be mitigate the nuisance.
Okay.
So it sounds like.
So that's some, some kind of clarity on number four?
Yes. Yeah, we have clarity in number four.
Number three, manufacturing, testing, processing facilities. I think the consensus is that we're not interested in trying to create regulations around that and trying to regulate that business because it's probably too complex and too large and more than we want to. We probably have the land and the facilities for it anyway, so.
So, so we're going to just prohibit it? I think Larkspur has essentially done that.
I think that's what we're saying is we would prohibit it. And you may have a different opinion. I don't know. If you want to express that, go ahead. It's.
I, I'm not going to go against the consensus on this one.
Okay.
What?
I'm, I'm happy to say that just, I don't, I don't necessarily, I mean, to me, these seem like just businesses, right? In that they're not, they're not putting weed out, they're not putting cannabis out into the community. I don't know that they would really have lots of cash on site, which is, which would be my, one of my primary concerns about dispensaries. So, and I guess my feeling is that I think it was Sloan that said that, you know, this, this isn't likely an issue for Corder Medera. As Jim said, you know, if, if you want to have your manufacturing facility next to your distribution facility and it becomes this big, you know, business, this sprawling business, that's, it doesn't make business sense for anyone to try and locate that in Corder Medera because there's no space for it. My, my thought then would be, why would we prevent it if it's, if it's, you know, likely not?
My counter to that would be then why would you want to set up all the infrastructure and regulation?
Okay, yeah, that's a.
And laws and everything else to try to control it if you do, if you wanted to allow it. Because it's going to be expensive and it's going to require staff time and our time. It's going to require a lot in order to set up the infrastructure to regulate that.
I think it would.
That makes sense.
I think it.
Unless you're really seeing a benefit to it, I wouldn't pursue doing it.
Okay. I would caution, you know, making, getting to the, reaching the conclusion that there isn't space for it. I have no idea. A testing facility could be incredibly small.
Yeah.
I will, if I can, make two comments. One is, and I think it, it goes to the comment that was just made, that although number three is one number, there are multiple categories. And so you could parse through and say no on manufacturing, but yes on testing and go through the list. So that, that is an option if, if it feels like there are differences. And then the other point I wanted to make is most jurisdictions that are allowing manufacturing do have very intensive regulations, particularly for manufacturing. But it's also true for many of the, of the different. But it's also true for many of the, of the different business types that are pre-retail. There are a large number of regulations that most jurisdictions have, but probably the biggest one is the manufacturing one.
Okay.
So I, I guess I'm saying it probably would be a pretty heavy lift for staff to bring forward proposal for manufacturing, and would take some of council's time if that is something that you wanted to, at least in theory, allow.
Right. Okay.
Yes, sir. Well, I am not especially in need of saying okay to manufacturing. I still think it would be a good contribution to the landscape to have a quality testing, certification, quality control facility, if it's not, if it's not over large. But I also know that those, that that type of business doesn't really, as far as I know, exist in our town yet in any related form. I'm thinking of, you know, biologic, blood testing, there are a variety of businesses that do exist in Marin County that I don't think have, have found their home here. So, but I would not be, I would not completely say no to it as of this time.
Okay, so I guess we don't have consensus, but we have sort of a general direction. So I guess we're working up. So now we're back to one, retail stores for medicinal, medicinal or non-medicinal sales. And I don't think there's a consensus on this. I think there's several people who believe that we don't want any kind of retail facilities. There are some people who are saying they'd be open to them under the right circumstances. And I will open it back up to anybody who wants to add comments to that or clarification or-
Yeah, could I clarify my position, please?
Please, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that, that, like I said, you know, in principle, I feel that, given that there's a liquor store across the street from Town Hall, I don't see why we would, you know, ban dispensaries outright. But I do think that because cannabis businesses are cash only right now, to me, that's a major risk that cannot presently be mitigated to the point of acceptability. So I would be open to extending our ban on brick and mortar dispensaries in town until A, we have more information that was brought up repeatedly, and B, until cannabis businesses can have bank accounts and are not sitting on mountains of cash.
Okay.
I thought we were all kind of in that camp, maybe not David, I don't know.
I don't think David is.
Well, I, I like this distinction. I am also thinking that, I haven't heard of it, but there might be a business that has a real specialty in oils that are used primarily for, I would say, medical purposes. And I don't honestly know how those are all transacted. They probably have to be cash businesses. So, you know, let's continue the moratorium until such time as we know more and can be ready to be affirmative.
Phil, did you hear that?
So Phil, you got that?
I'm sorry. He wasn't answering. Phil doesn't care what the council says.
I think we have consensus.
I did hear the specialty-
I think we have consensus.
Number one, no.
Number one, no.
Okay.
For the time being.
If I may just clarify, the moratorium does end at the end of next September, and it cannot be renewed. So what you were looking at now is a permanent ordinance?
We have to start creating some ordinance.
Correct. So you would be looking at banning retail. That issue can be revisited at any other time. You can always amend your zoning ordinance to allow for retail or allow it under a conditional use permit. So what, the direction you're now giving is to come back with a permanent ordinance that would ban retail, which council can revisit at a later time.
Well, could we put a sunset on that?
I would not recommend a sunset, I would just recommend keeping it on the books. The difficulty with having, you don't need a sunset. The difficulty with having a sunset is then if you don't act, the ban lifts, and then you have, then it's an open door and you could potentially have the conditional use, the non-conforming use issue that we were talking about earlier. So I would not recommend a sunset, I would just keep the ban, but you're welcome to come back, either this council or a future council, and revisit it at a later date.
But a sunset would force a future council to address the issue?
Yes, it would.
Unless they miss, unless they didn't catch it and it just expired.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for participating this evening, and thank you, council, for that discussion, that was really helpful. Okay, we will move on then to, I think we're on six point, six point two. Appointment of one council member to represent the town of Cordera on the Marin County Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Countywide Priority Setting Committee. Staff report.
Rebecca, or is this- Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council members. This vacancy was brought to my attention by the Marin County Community Development Agency who maintains a committee titled Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Countywide Priority Setting Committee. And this committee is comprised of one member of the Board of Supervisors, a representative from each of the city and town councils, and then seven community members representing six regions spanning Marin, and then one at-large member representing the county. This position was, was held since 2002 by a recently retired council member, and given that there are no term limits associated with this appointment, I, it wasn't on my radar of appointments to make when we do our annual allocation of committee and board assignments. So I have attached to the staff report the summary of the activities that the committee is responsible for, and they are asking that we consider appointing one council member to attend these meetings, which are held fairly infrequently, only about four times per year. They are in the evenings, and they are relatively brief.
Okay.
Who wants to do it?
Are there any, first off, are there any questions for Rebecca about this? Okay, is there any, anyone from the public who would like to speak or comment on this topic? Hearing none, then I will bring it back to the council to see if anyone's interested in becoming this person and volunteering for this. I did not talk to anybody about this before the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I first became aware of those two programs when I was in planning school and when I was working at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for three years in 1979 to 82. I, so I know what, why they exist and how they function. I'm not in love with this idea, but I am willing to take this on.
Wow. Then I think we have our answer.
I move David Kuhnhart go on this committee.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, David. We have a motion from Jim.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Rivasia.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I will inform the county, and they will be in touch.
Thank you for helping us move-
Inform the county.
I know it was always one of Carla's favorite meetings, so.
Seriously, or is it?
Yeah, seriously, it was. She just really liked doing the reports on it. She was talking about how great they were.
Okay.
Moving on to item six point two, consideration and possible action to adopt resolution number zero six slash two oh one eight, changing the meeting time for the Board of Directors of Sanitary District Number Two. You want to talk about this, Rebecca?
Nope.
Briefly?
Well, we do, we have two options. Thank you, Mayor, council members, I know it's getting late, but there are a couple issues. It may seem straightforward to separate the two bodies. It would help the public and help the council members and help the grand jury and other people who are interested in determining which items are town council-related and which items are sanitary district-related. Because right now, they're intermingled on one agenda, and for the layperson, it's hard to know when a sanitary district is hearing a particular item, because it's relatively infrequent that the sanitary district has business items. The two issues that could possibly affect us by moving the sanitary district to convene immediately following the town council meeting would be that closed sessions for the town council would be affected. So we would either need a separate agenda for a closed session item to be convened after, or you can maybe, I don't know how procedurally you would do this, but maybe suspend it until after the sanitary district meets, so then it would effectively be held after. So there are options, we can work our way through that. The other issue would be-
The town attorney is nodding, so I think we're-
The other issue would be the public open time. I feel like we would want to allow any public comment on sanitary district items to be heard during the town council meeting, otherwise you could have someone sit for an undetermined amount of time to make their public comment during the sanitary meeting, which seems prohibitive. But again, that can be addressed at another time.
My suggestion to the latter problem would be to have your time for open public comment on the sanitary district items at the first, the first item on your agenda, so that the person who would really not be making, having to wait very long, because it would just be adjourning one meeting, starting the next meeting, and then the first item would be open public comment on items not on the agenda. So it would happen very quickly, and whoever that person was wouldn't sit here for very long. Because if you really are separating them out, I think it would get very difficult and confusing to try to then mush those two things together.
So you're also saying we should separate public comment?
I would, but I would, I would, but I would do the open public comment on items not on the agenda for the sanitary district at the beginning. You can do it at any time.
That we do with council meetings.
Yeah, I would do it at the very beginning to, to make sure that that, that can happen.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Rebecca, your recommendation is the one that's in the packet, right?
Yes, to determine that the start time for the sanitary district board meetings would be set for seven o'clock PM or following the adjournment of the town council meeting, whichever is later. So if we, for some reason, have a half-hour town council meeting, we can immediately then start the sanitary district board meeting.
A dream.
Did you mean whichever is earlier?
Couldn't we do it six thirty, have the same start time?
Do six forty-five.
Because we're gonna be, do it, if we do it after the council meeting every, every time anyway.
My suggestion is that you do stagger them. I think if you did it at six forty-five, there's no way that you're ever gonna, and if, if it is-
It is possible.
I would suggest that you stagger them. Otherwise, it's gonna be very confusing to the public, because they're gonna have two out there, they're not really gonna know. But I think if you did six thirty and six forty-five, that's pretty clear which one comes first. And we can note on the agenda for the sanitary district that the sanitary district will start after the council meeting adjourns, but it will not be before six forty-five.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for comments, discussion, or a possible motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
To?
Approve Resolution Zero Six Two Oh One with the amendment that the hour is six forty-five PM every calendar month.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second adopting that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to confirm that this would take effect after January first, so December eighteenth would still be in our usual fashion. Counts, oh, sorry. Board Member Bailey.
Yes.
Board Member Beckman.
Yes.
Board Member Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice President Andrews.
Yes.
President Rivasia.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item seven, Town Manager and Council Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna defer my comments to the Public Works Director, he has some good news, so I'll give it to him.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So a few, a few updates on the public work side. On Monday next week, there will be a flood board meeting, and so if you want more detailed information other than what I'm about to say, you should attend that meeting or pay attention. But I do want the council to be aware that I wanted to commend the Public Works Maintenance staff for their efforts in the past couple of months. They have spent a lot of time preparing the town for the winter season. I wasn't here, it's my one-year anniversary today. I've made it one year, so all of the prep work that took place last year, I wasn't a part of, but I got to see it firsthand this year in terms of cleaning the catch basins, bringing the vac con truck out, and really making sure that everything is, is ready for, you know, big rains, storms. We're looking at shoring up some of the walls that aren't doing well up on top of Sausalito. We've managed to evaluate the pump stations and do a lot of maintenance on those and get those ready for a heavy winter season, should we experience that. And so they, they have experienced a little bit of staff turnover in terms of new bodies and the new, new folks in Public Works Maintenance are doing great, and the whole team is worthy of your, I guess, continued appreciation for their efforts, including a lot of drain, storm drain cleaning and getting the leaves from the fall out of our storm drain system. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you in terms of reporting out is we're continuing to move forward, it'll be formally on your agenda in a couple of weeks on the climate adaptation plan. We have had successful folks respond to our request for proposals, and so there's more exciting news about moving that contract forward in a couple of weeks. It'll be probably one of the bigger endeavors you'll undertake, the guidance and development of this climate adaptation plan, because it is the most forward-thinking document that this council has seen, and I would guess since its existence, because it needs to look thirty, fifty, and eighty years forward. We don't typically do that in city government, but when it comes to preparing for things like sea level rise and fire risk that we know are happening, and we're experiencing them around the state, and to a very, I would say, terrible degree in the fire season in the past couple of years, there will be a chapter dedicated to fire preparedness in the climate adaptation plan. So I just want to put those on your radar, pay attention, it'll be on your agenda packet next week, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, but may I make a comment?
Yes.
Peter, I'm sure I speak for the council when I thank you for the work with the flood control and with the climate adaptation, it's fantastic, and please extend the compliments to the council, to your entire staff.
And on a more mundane level, I want to thank you for cleaning all the storm drains and making sure they don't back up, because we hear about that immediately.
Yes.
And the street sweeping has been fabulous on Christmas Tree Hill.
So thank you.
And when are we gonna have to get a new machine? Because I'll, you know, the new one's just fine, you know, okay.
Anything else? No? Okay, council member reports?
No reports.
The only thing I'd like to report is that on November eleventh at eleven AM, I was over at Aegis for a ceremony where we honored the veterans who were there, and there were eight of them there and their families, and very enjoyable, very memorable.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Any reports? No?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
You want to come back, back in? November fourteenth was a very big day for me. First of all, I attended the Power Association of Northern California lunch in the city, which gave me an opportunity to hear from several folks from PG&E on their side of a few of our current topics concerning marine clean energy, and from their perspective, they are a hundred and five percent clean energy because they're selling clean energy contracts to others. Of course, they're selling them at a loss and charging MCE for that loss, but never mind. Then I went from there on to the TAM meeting, the advanced, two things that I previously reported on, the North-South Greenway. The work is about to start early, early in 2019, expanding the pass, overpassing for the purpose of bikes and peds of Cordera Creek. And then went on to the, see how Jim did, and the MTA discussion on fiber optic solutions in that evening, so it was a long day. I did then, I've been asked by members of the county's Drawdown Marin program to be a part of something called the Renewable Energy Stakeholders Group, and we had our first meeting, this is an implementation strategy for the Drawdown Marin campaign, one of six, and attended the first half-day meeting of that group, really bright, diverse group of individuals who are gonna work on bright ideas for renewable energy. And then just last week, I did the training of the leadership in equity and opportunity training for three days. It was very enlightening, so if anybody wants to know more about that, I'd be happy to share. So if anybody wants to know more about that, I'd be happy to, um, share. And you will see what I learned from it as we undertake discussions of climate action and housing in this town.
Thank you, David. Eli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Chamber of Commerce's Board of Directors meeting this morning, and they, like many of us, are very excited about the, uh, recent deal that Todd worked out with Caltrans to finally do something about the trash on the freeways. So that is fantastic. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, and I attended a CMSA board meeting, uh, last month. Uh, that was my, I attended that just observing. I will be, I believe, sworn in as our rep at the next meeting once Diane, uh, this was Diane's last meeting, which I attended. Uh, that meeting was given mostly to analyzing CMSA's recent audit. So not a whole lot to report there yet.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I have nothing to report. Uh, we will move on to item eight point one, review of the draft agenda for December eighteenth, Town Council Meeting. Any comments on that?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, may I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Todd, could you also thank the, uh, Chief Scherz? That the fireman, the Santa Claus fireman thing drove around, I'm sure all the neighborhoods, but including Madera Gardens, and was a gigantic hit. Um, so please tell him it's fantastic. The local, the kids in the local neighborhood were screaming and yelling, and they were so happy about the whole thing.
They got candy.
Did they, did they throw candy at it or missed that?
Okay.
None of that went into the storm drain, did it? I wasn't out there. Spent a lot of time. Thank you for that clarification, Town Clerk.
Moving on, we are now going to adjourn to closed session. We're going to close the open meeting. We're moving to open session. We're going to go into the office pack here or we're going to, what are you going to do?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We need to take public comment before we go into closed session.
Oh, okay. Any public comment before we go into closed session? Hearing none, we're going to go into closed session. Thank you.